Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the September 17th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, teacher. Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Engenga.
Here.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Kerwin.
Present.
Faye Kelly.
Here.
And President Saunders.
Here.
And we have a quorum. And our student trustee.
President.
De Grand Prix.
Not feeling that right there.
I know. Sorry, Lisbon. I'll forget.
Start with.
Okay. So you want to start? Presentation. Go with the teacher.
Okay. Good evening, all. At our last board meeting, we had a parent that came and with her children, for her grandchildren. And she was very concerned about her children getting to school safely. I just want everyone to know that we took care of that situation and we're really happy that we were able to do so.
We're going to go on to recognition of the Teacher of the Year for 2023-2024.
Yes, hello, good evening, all. I really am honored to recognize individuals. Your principals made the selection based on a criteria. And based on that criteria, we have several people that's being honored from each school because you do exemplary work, you go above and beyond your call of duty. You, our scholars, are improving because of individuals like you. Thank you so very much. Dr. Doggett will call each of you up and we will give you the recognition that you so deserve. Thank you. (applause).
Good evening, Mount Vernon City School District. I have the opportunity to recognize the Teachers of the Year. Again, like Dr. Smith said, these teachers were chosen due to their accomplishment. So at this time, I will call them up one by one by school. So when you hear your name, please come up. First up, from Benjamin Turner Academy, Ms. Nadine Jefferson.[224.02][224.02](applause). From Cecil H. Parker School, Mr. Royal Brown.[245.54][245.54](applause). From Denzel Washington School of the Arts, Daniel Wolf.[258.14][258.14](applause). From Edward Williams School, Ms. Althea Simon.[276.14][276.14](applause).
Come for some evil shit, but you can't.
Forgot about the crew. Forgot about the crew, Fred. Forgot about the crew.
Shit, but you can't come for this, though. Oh, okay.
From Graham School, Stephanie Malani.[306.82][306.82](applause). From Grimes School, Mercedes Quintetos.[321.82][321.82](applause). From Hamilton School, Ms. Lisa Morris.[338.14][338.14](applause). From Lincoln School, Ms. Christina Delucia.[356.73][356.73](applause). From the Mount Vernon High School, Alexandra Sherlock.[369.94][369.94](applause). From Mount Vernon Honor Academy, Ms. Deborah Medina.[392.14][392.14](applause). From Mount Vernon Leadership Academy, Ms. Alethea Bryan.[403.45][403.45](applause). From Mount Vernon Steam Academy.[425.45][425.45](applause). I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I haven't even started yet. From Mount Vernon Steam Academy, Ms. Anna Rodriguez.[436.34][436.34](applause). From Nelson Mandela, Dr. Jose Zalacoff, Ms. Lori Tucci.[455.22][455.22](applause). Pennington School, Ms. Nicole Boone-Muckler.[473.54][473.54](applause). They stand. Can I finish the program? From Rebecca Turner Academy, Ms. Sheba Serna.[508.62][508.62](applause). Last but not least, from Trapekan School, Ms. Christine White.[528.82][528.82](applause). Congratulations to all our Teachers of the Year.[536.02][536.02](applause).
We're going to move on to communications from the public. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and, if any, organization you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker this evening is Cynthia Crenshaw.
Good evening.
Can you hear me, hear me with all that noise?
Okay. Four things I would like to discuss. I would like an educated reason why a contract person received a raise between $10,000 and $12,000. The two reasons this board gave was because they voted, and the second time because the person deserved it. If that's the reason, I believe our teachers deserve a raise also, which is clearly displayed tonight. And on several times, we asked this question. Let the taxpayer who is paying the increase know what was the determining factor for the raise. If you feel that you do not have to tell the taxpayer how their money is being spent, just publicly say that. On top of the raise, the person was given a two-year contract that will increase their salary to $210,000. Why? Look up the meaning, deserve. Although you voted, some disagreed with the raise. And this is not the person's fault. This is the decision of the board to give this uneducated reason. So we would like to know what was the determining factor in this person getting a $10,000 to $12,000 raise, and on top of that, a two-year contract, which brings that person to $210,000, I believe. And is this person dedicated to the board, or is this person working outside? Because I thought I seen him on Channel 12 News with the Ayers case. So we are paying him, and he's doing criminal law also. But we would like to know a determining factor. Why did this person get that type of raise? We are entitled to know, and if you don't think that we should know, then just say it publicly. Okay, the next thing, I was informed that employees at Friendship Worship may or may not get paid for the month of September because this district did not release the stipend. They did not get paid on the 15th like the rest of the district. If this is true, why is the district holding their money? Some people live and work from paycheck to paycheck like seniors from month to month. We are a Title I school and was told, I was told at first that the children would have to pay $5 for seconds. Then it was changed to $2. For some children, it's a place where they can get a somewhat, define somewhat, decent meal. And who is getting this kickback on this plan? And the food that is not being used, are you throwing it out like Dunkin' Donuts? We would like to know what's the status with the charter schools? You were presented with three to four pages of petitions from the residents against increasing enrollment to take away money from the public schools. What's the status on that? No buses for trip this year for our children, but a contract employee can get a $10,000 raise. You can't make this stuff up. Who is watching the house? Because this is just inappropriate. You are wasting our money, and I think we deserve a reason, a solid reason. Not that you voted, or they deserve, why did they deserve it, get a raise? And why do our children have to pay for food that you may or may not throw out? Why are you holding Friendship Worship money? Because those teachers did not get paid, and I was told they may get paid on the 30th. What's the status of the charter schools? Did they get what they want, or did we get what we wanted? There's no buses for trips this year, which is, which is really, really hard for our, you know, children. But you agreed to give somebody $10,000 raise. If you could answer these four questions, if not tonight, next meeting, I would appreciate it. So I'll just be back again. Thank you.
That's it for public comments. We go on to reports of the superintendent.
Good evening. I would like to... Good evening again. I would like to say it was a great job done by building in grounds for the Graham School. I also wanted to thank all the individuals that was involved, including board members, staff members, the principal. We collaborated, we talked, we worked diligently to make sure that students would return to school on Monday. They returned. It was a great opening. I'm very proud of the work that we've done. In regards to the air quality, parents have been requesting that that takes place. It should happen by the end of this week, Thursday morning. So that's going to happen Thursday morning. But a great job by the Buildings and Ground Department. Thank you, board members, for also meeting as often as we needed to meet to make sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
I think that deserves an applause.
Yes.[1078.73][1078.73](applause). Last week, we celebrated Ry Benjamin. That was a collaboration with the city. I think Ry Benjamin will influence many of our youngsters. As I said before, there are students today that will expire to be a Ry Benjamin. He came from Mount Vernon, graduated in 2015, but he was not simply a great athlete. He was also a great student. He's someone that we're very proud of. We gave him a hero's welcome. It was a very nice day. Again, I'm glad that Mount Vernon City School District came out. We recognized him on the Hall of Fame in Mount Vernon, and we do have the principal in the audience. Thank you so much. We honored him at the new Mount Vernon High School. We also named a track after him. I believe that he was very honored. We went to every school. The artwork was amazing. Angela Hall did a very good job in terms of meeting with all the art departments to make sure that, again, students came out, they participated. They was very enthusiastic and excited to see Ry Benjamin on the float. So I want to thank everyone involved. Dr. Gail White Wallace, she really coordinated an event. We only had one week. We were contacted by Ry's agent, and we stood ready to serve. I think by now, everyone knows that last week, a woman lost control of her car, and the car ran into the Mount Vernon Honor Academy. Fortunately, there was no injuries, and so we're really glad that while it could have been a very serious thing, it was not. Her car most likely was totaled, and she had to go to emergency room, but our staff and students were safe. I wanted, one of the questions raised tonight, I wanted to speak about that as well. I've heard from several board members, as a matter of fact, over the fact that the second meal pricing, there's a second meal price, and I just want you to know, that doesn't come from Mount Vernon City School District. It comes from the New York State Child Nutrition. So letters were sent out to all principals to be backpacked to students and to be sent home to parents. The letter that was sent out to the principal read, "All Mount Vernon City School District Building Principals, subject food service, meal pricing, and vending machine guidelines. Please be advised of the following requirements, which are mandated by the New York State Education Department Child Nutrition." That's the National School Lunch Program regarding second meal pricing and vending machine management within the district. Please note that all of our students receive free lunch, but if they want a second lunch, that's, since they receive free lunch, the Child Nutrition, State of New York, they pay for those lunches, but they do not pay for second meals, and they allow us to put a price on that. But it's, we have to charge students for that second meal. The question that basically keeps coming up is, if you're throwing it out, why don't you just give it to them? While I can't answer that question, what I can say, K-8 breakfast, second meal is $1.25, lunch is $2. Grades 9 to 12, the breakfast, second meal is $1.50, the lunch is $2.25. Also, we have adult meal pricing, that's $2.95 plus tax, and lunch is $5.05 plus tax. So the vending machines managed by Superior Vending, these vending machines are classified as competitive sales. Please ensure that all vending machines are turned off during lunch periods to comply with New York State Education Child Nutrition National School Lunch Program regulations. Thank you for your attention to these matters. Please ensure that this information is communicated to your staff and adhered to throughout the school year.
Can we speak into the light?
I heard you mention what the second cost of the, what the cost is for second lunch if they, children want it. And you said that, that it's per New York State, but is it them that determine what the price is, or the district?
No.
So you actually, so the district determined what that $1.25 it said it is? Is that what you did?
The district.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
I wanted everyone to know that we're forming a reorganization committee, and this committee will be looking at K-8 model. We plan on meeting next week to have that discussion. We're going to look at our building utilization. So this evening, we have two presentations. We will begin with the Junior Achievement of New York. That's Caroline Zelios.
Zelios.
I still got it wrong. Thank you so much.
Oh, great. Hi, my name is Caroline Zelios. I'm from Junior Achievement of New York. I was thrilled to be invited to speak to you tonight, so thank you for the opportunity. What I realized, I work with a lot of teachers at the schools, a lot of principals, I meet a lot of students, but I haven't actually met the board. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you. Is that better?
No, not yet.
I'm sorry. So we are thrilled to, so I am thrilled to be here tonight representing Junior Achievement. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about it. Slide? Do I just, okay, great. Our mission, Junior Achievement has been around since 1919. We're 105 years old. We're one of the oddest nonprofits in education in this country. The mission has always been the same, and we've been partnered with Mount Vernon High School for over 10 years now. We want young people to succeed. All Junior Achievement of New York programs are provided at no charge whatsoever to any of the schools in our area, and the programs focus on financial literacy, work and career readiness, and entrepreneurship. And over the past six years that I have been working with Junior Achievement, we've expanded greatly, and we're almost in every single Mount Vernon High School and elementary, middle school. Slide? So why Junior Achievement? For 105 years, kids need to take control of their financial futures. We give them access to basic financial principles on their level. We have programs from kindergarten all the way to senior year in high school. It's important for kids to understand financial literacy. We use volunteers from the community as well as from our corporate partners like PepsiCo, Wells Fargo, EY, Citibank Chase. So we use volunteers as well to fill, come into the classrooms and teach our programs. Slide? As I mentioned, Junior Achievement has actually partnered with Mount Vernon Schools now for over 10 years. Toni Ann Trumbetta at Mount Vernon High School, she has been our coordinator for a long time, and now we're also in the Steam Academy. Last year alone, just last year, over 2,500 Mount Vernon students participated in one or more Junior Achievement programs throughout the entire school year. We keep growing and growing, and we're expanding more. Slide? We're offering programs now, it used to be just Mount Vernon High School, but now we're also at the Mount Vernon Steam Academy and Denzel Washington School of the Arts. Your student trustee, she has participated in Junior Achievement programs at Denzel Washington, and I actually just spoke to the guidance counselor there to get the programs going. The programs at the high schools, they're at a higher level. It's JA Take Stock in Your Future, which is a stock market challenge program to teach kids about investing, and I know it's being run at the Steam Academy this year. JA University has been done at Mount Vernon High School. We had a great career speaker series at Steam last year with representatives from Verizon. We also have JA Inspire, which is a virtual career fair that a lot of teachers at all the schools, because it was open to high school and middle schools, participated. And in the past, before the pandemic, you also did JA Finance Park in the City. JA High School Heroes is our most popular program. Ellie participated in it. We train high school students at all three of the high schools to be the volunteers in the classroom. And then we go to the elementary school, and I should mention, we bus the kids on academy bus, and Junior Achievement picks up all costs related to academy bus. And they are the volunteers for the day. The students, in return, they learn important communication, leadership skills, and what it takes to really teach the kids. And eight hours of community service for giving back to a school in their community that gets on their permanent record. Slide? We are now in all of these elementary and middle schools. Pennington School is going to have their first event ever on October 9th. Some schools have fallen off, but at some point during the past six years, I've had the pleasure in being in all of these schools, and like I said, we'd love to return to the schools that we're no longer at. So the JA days at the elementary schools, we already have Graham and Grimes and the Honor Academy, the Leadership Academy, and Pennington, and Nelson, and Jonathan Backwell, sorry, and Nelson Mandela also called. We already have all their Junior Achievement days on the calendar for this year. Slide? The programs, how do you teach financial literacy to a kindergartner? Well, we have programs that range from the pre- So in kindergarten, we're talking about needs and wants, and if you had one quarter, how do you decide what to spend it on? Or do you decide to save it? All the way up to JA, our nation, which teaches students about how the country is run, our economic system. So some students, especially at Trapp Heagan and Graham, at least for the past six years that I have been here, have had a Junior Achievement Day every single year from kindergarten onward, and will continue with our programs at the high school level. We provide, can I go back just one second? Thank you. No, it's okay, go forward, sorry. I did forgot to mention, this is a different presentation than my final version, Jada Robinson, she's a senior from Mount Vernon High School on the winning basketball team from four or five years ago. She participated in like seven different Junior Achievement Days during her time at Mount Vernon High School. She applied to be our Junior Achievement Student of the Year in Long Island, New York City, all of Lower Westchester County. She won Student of the Year for Junior Achievement, and she received a $10,000 scholarship that we paid directly to her college. So we really, she was amazing, Jada was amazing. We've also had some winners of cash prizes, smaller, of our High School Heroes essay contests. So as you can tell, we love our partnership with Mount Vernon, and we're very grateful. We provide all materials and training. I'm constantly meeting with Ms. Trombetta and Ms. Williams, everybody, to make sure that we're picking the right programs for each school and finding out what their needs are. Again, all programs are offered at no charge whatsoever, schools in our JA New York area. And we also have many volunteers, and we always look for more. And the reason I'm here today is because Orville Gale from last year's trustees, he worked for Verizon, and he volunteered at a Junior Achievement Day, and he asked me, "Why aren't you in Mount Vernon Schools?" And I was like, "Are you kidding? I'm always in Mount Vernon." And he connected us, so I really appreciate it very much. Slide. So I'm really just here to get to know you, to introduce Junior Achievement, and honestly to say thank you, because at every school, we have a Junior Achievement Coordinator, and they really make my job a pleasure, and I enjoy working with them. So thank you. You all have a folder with my business card and email address, in case you're interested in any program or learning more, just reach out. Thank you.
Ms. Zelios?
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to make a, I didn't start out in 1919, but I was part of Junior Achievement in Mount Vernon many years ago.
Oh, I love that.
It was instrumental in going forward and understanding the business world.
Thank you, thank you. I love when I meet people who have done Junior Achievement a long time ago, that's great, thank you. And I apologize, any other questions?
You're supporting ROTC program with your financial and your...
We offer our Junior Achievement programs to after-school clubs, to any club, school district, organization that wants our programs, we are there. And now we've expanded into the community college, trade college level by offering programs for 18 to 25-year-olds.
Can I get your card?
Yes, of course, happy to do so.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Marie Gabotan, and she will be introducing her team. She will be discussing graduation rates.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm going to ask Dr. Pauline Pierce and Ms. Tiffany Izzo to come and join me at the podium. So, this particular presentation took a lot of people in our educational village, but I am highlighting Mount Vernon High School because it is something that was started when Dr. Smith was Assistant Superintendent, actually Associate Superintendent of PPS in terms of monitoring our seniors before June. Next slide, please. So, I want to do graduation by the numbers. This June to August, we graduated 436 students in the Mount Vernon City School District. Next slide. That means, for the first time in decades, the Mount Vernon City School District projected 23, 24 graduation rate is 79.9%. So let's round that up. We had 80%, y'all, we graduating the kids. Next slide, please. So that is 5.6% higher than 22, 23 school year. Next slide. However, get ready, Mount Vernon High School receive an 82.7% graduation rate. Next slide. A percentage last week in 2000. I went back to the NICE data archive, they were at 78%, that is closest as they've ever gotten. This deserves several rounds of applause for Mount Vernon High School. Next slide. DWSA had 93.5% graduation rate. Mount Vernon STEAM had 90.7%. Our alternative school had 37 students from that cohort. Seven graduated that would normally have not graduated if they had not gone to RTA with an honorable 21.9%. So how did we get here? So the numbers are so amazing, we talked about how did we achieve this wonderful achievement? Hence why the lovely people from the new Mount Vernon High School is here. Targeted performance monitoring. What does that mean? We're viewing students' grade, we're viewing students' attendance, and constant communication. And I'm going to allow Ms. Izzo to speak all about that.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, hi. So this year I was the AP, or last year I was the AP of 12th grade, and we worked in a model, so Ms. Sherlock is actually, she was Teacher of the Year, so she was here to be awarded. She was also on my cost team. So we have grade level cost teams, the Coordination of Services Team, and in those teams, we look at the data. So we pull data on attendance, trends in attendance, academics, and SEL, we collected a lot through talking to the teachers and talking to our support staff that are part of that team. And in that team, we really worked on reaching out to the individual students in a very personalized way that was focused on where their attendance was going, what do they need to graduate, and where we were seeing their grades going. And a good portion of that, we also did a lot of celebration of those students, because some of our students that may be struggling with attendance, we need to celebrate their grades. Those students that are doing great with grades, sometimes they need a little bit, or struggling with the grades, need a little celebration for the attendance. And it's that really personalized, like, touch that each of the people on my team were able to do, like Ms. Sherlock. She reached out to a lot of students and had individual conversations, because she had those personal relationships in those classrooms. And what we really learned is the value of the cost team is those personal relationships, while going back to that data. You always have to start with the data, because we made all of our decisions in the cost team based on the data.
So, well, I'm a little bit crazy when it comes to the graduation rate. I'm always monitoring and always watching it, always speaking to the high school principal. One of the people I spoke to the most was Dr. Pierce, and I'm going to let her talk about the journey to that 82.7%.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Gabotan. So, my assistant principal here, AP Izzo, is the data guru. For all the schools out there, you cannot do anything without having the data in front of you. And it makes a huge difference when you have someone on the team who can access the data and present the data so that we can make the decisions that we need to make. In our first year, and I still have some members sitting in the room who were present on our cost teams, when I came to the New Mount Vernon High School, we started the cost teams on each grade level, which AP Izzo correctly stated is the Coordination of Support Team. Some schools may look at that as MTSS, so before MTSS became a big thing, we actually started it. We have on each grade level, not only on the 12th grade level, we, each grade level has a cost team where, just as AP Izzo described, the team focuses on the grade level. Now, there is not one student at the New Mount Vernon High School who doesn't have someone who has eyes on them. One of the key things that I see that makes this work is the fact that students are becoming partners in their own learning. To make them partners, they must know their data. Knowing their data tells them where they are in terms of, or in relation to the expectations that we have for them. I can remember last year when this current cohort, AP, the last cohort, when we started to celebrate the honor roll recipients, and there were students running up, "Oh, how can I, how can I get on honor roll? How can I get on the honor roll?" And it was a huge competition on the 12th grade level. And I should give the AP another round of applause, because she worked tirelessly to make sure that our students were rewarded for the efforts that they, that they made. It was indeed something to see when you have students running in to find out, "How can I make the honor roll next time?" And that is what we're striving to do at the school on every grade level. Each AP on the grade level know that they have a criteria to meet, and the goal is for 100% of the students on the grade level to meet a criteria for the next grade level. So right now, a lot of pressure is on, and they know now, because for the past two weeks, we have been hounding it and pounding it in everyone's head, that this is the year of accountability. I'm sorry, let's go back on that, it's the year of responsibility, where we're fostering accountability for success. And a part of that accountability formula equates to the fact that every student must know their data. The teachers must know their data. And this week, we're celebrating Safety Monitor's Week, Safety Monitor Appreciation Week, and why I'm mentioning that is the fact that our safety monitors are also a part of that support system. So they know where each student is supposed to be, they will make the extra effort and go the extra mile to make sure that the students who need to go to that particular spot, whether it be for some counseling, or for some extra help in the afternoon, if they need a ride, or if they need to make a phone call, our safety monitors are stepping up. And I'm saying all of that to say that at the New Mount Vernon High School, we are indeed building community, because there is not one stakeholder in that school that is not participating in all of the initiatives that we are, we have put in place, and we are all working together for the betterment of our children. And we are extremely, extremely, extremely proud of the work that we're doing. So to all the New Mount Vernon High School staff, if you're watching, and I know you're going to play this back, because you're going to hear about our 82.7% graduation rate, you're going to watch this back, I want to extend a huge thank you for buying into the vision, buying into the dream, understanding that we're looking at our students as being at potential, and we're working hard to make sure that they realize their dreams. Thank you.
So, the other thing that we've done is we have had targeted intervention. We are trying to be very purpose-forward after-school credit recovery with Saturday School Regent's Prep. We also target progress monitoring even at the district office, which was started by Dr. Smith, where we are, every grade level, we are going over the transcript, we start with our seniors first. Next week begins senior transcript review with every student. We look at the grades, we look at what's missing, if we could still add courses, because we want to ensure that our students are graduating in four years with their cohort. Also, we are focusing in social-emotional learning. Most of the school counselors also have interns, so we have extra body and extra hands to help address students' social-emotional need. I could not do this presentation or this work without Mr. Ramirez. I drive him absolutely crazy about the data. What do I mean? Target data analysis also aids in that. In 2021, 22, we looked at our graduation rate. We tied it to attendance, we tied it to the way we registering student, we tied it to the way we are discharging student, and we noticed that there were discrepancies. So if I, Marie, who went to Mount Vernon High School, and I moved to Connecticut, sometime I'll be as a dropout. In reality, if you use my state ID, you could find me in the system, and I now belong to Connecticut. We've done a lot of that work, I am very grateful to Mr. Ramirez's team, Mr. Reno Limbo, Sarah McCarty, Sandy Morasco, I drive them absolutely not in terms of making sure the data is on point. One of the other things we've done, we trained every school secretary to learn the process, how to appropriately drop a student when they are somewhere else. When they leave us, we document correctly where they are. Hence, we at 79.9%, something that has not happened in multiple decades. And for Mount Vernon High School to be at 82.7%, 24 years, y'all, they have not been at that number, and we've done amazing, and we could only go up from there. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? I thank you so very much for that presentation. We are Mount Vernon proud, that's a job well done. And for those people out there looking for a school district, Mount Vernon, we're on the way up, right? Thank you so much. That ends the superintendent's report.
We're going to move on to committee reports.
Thank you. I want to start with our trustee, Ellie. Any reports from you?
So, last week, like trustee Mitchell said, I was going to help him with the food service concern. So I spoke to the, hold me a second. I spoke to the lead, the food service leave at my school, Crystal Ballard, and she come up with some very great points and a great idea. Since each, since each school has different needs based on food services, she thought that when they have the wellness meetings with Armonk, someone from the food service department from each school should go to those meetings, that way they can address the concerns of the people working there. And staffing is a problem, at least for my school, we don't just have like the regular lunch line, we also have a salad bar, I know at the high, they have that and a taco bar. And I've noticed at lunch sometimes, that if that wasn't open, people, kids just wouldn't eat at all, instead of going to the lunch line and getting a meal. And that's it for me, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Great job, thank you. So we're going to go to the audit report.
Good evening. So, we had, the audit committee had a preliminary meeting with our internal auditors, where we discussed the risk assessment on the school district, and also on the payroll. We had mentioned that they were doing a deep dive payroll audit, and so we just got, were brief on these audits. We will be getting the final recommendation and the final audit in about a month. They committed to complete the final in a month. So I will be reporting, or they will be coming in and doing a presentation on the payroll audit, and also the risk assessment for the school district.
Thank you, trustee Cohen. So going on to the budget committee.
So budget, we have not had a meeting from since our last board meeting, so I will be reporting at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Education committee?
Donna will be reporting on the committee report for education.
Thank you, to the chair, trustee Kelly. We met on September the 9th with Dr. Doggett and his cabinet. Two of the agenda items were on the SMART goals for the district, also walkthroughs through each of our buildings, and also writing through each of our buildings and also writing across the curriculum, grades K through twelve, and um how that will be implemented for our students. And that concludes the report. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. I have claims committee, uh, claims committee did not have a meeting as of yet. I'll chair that meeting. Facilities committee, trustee White.
Thank you. I'll report on um some of the activities that have been going on in the building and different buildings and trustee Warren Mitchell will report on the Graham, about Graham School. Lincoln installed new snow fences for safety in the playground. Pennington may install shelves for two storage areas in the pre-K room. Mount Vernon High School replaced broken phone cells on top of light posts behind I, behind the high school, behind the high, high school pool exit. Paperwork from DOH enclosed two oil tanks at Denzel and Graham School. And repairs to emergency lights have begun in some schools that will continue through next week. I wanna say to our painters and to the Graham custodians and their cleaners, a job well done. The painters painted fifteen classrooms at Graham and they, and the custodians were right on the hill of the construct, um, the construction people. Cause soon as they finished one room, they were in there cleaning that room and getting ready for opening on September twenty-third. And I heard it was a great opening.
Okay, yeah, so regarding Graham just a little bit, just because out of, in addition to all of the things that trustee White just mentioned that were going on around the district, Graham was a massive endeavor. It was the, it was more than a heavy lift. All right, so yes, I'm gonna shout out our painters, our buildings people, uh, our, the engineers that came in and kept talking to us, but I'm gonna take a second and I know I emailed Dr. Smith. When I came to the Graham School to tour the building for the, what was gonna get done, I saw every cabinet member come to the building and walk through. So I just wanna salute every last one of you that showed up because normally that doesn't happen and this was an incredible show of just straight support and muscle from this district, from the cabinet level. And then every trustee that was on the Zoom call as I ran my mouth and we talked about everything that they had, that we were working on, um, but a massive endeavor. So thank you all, Mike Ragusa, I, I, and Mark Ramandi, I, I can't thank you guys enough, Mark, Mike for leading this and get it and just making all of the muscle happen and making magic happen. Mark, thank you very much. Uh, and again, I had custodian over there and of course, Dr. Hunter McGregor, who was all hands on deck herself the entire time. So big salute to us all, to you all. Thank you.
Great to hear. Thank you. Great to hear. Great to hear. Uh, family and community engagement, is that it for you trustee? Is that it for you, Warren? As far as facilities? No, no, I didn't get that yet. No, no, okay. Uh, so family and community engagement, I didn't know, he goes, um, family and community engagement, we have a meeting on Thursday. We have a retreat on Thursday, so we may have to reschedule, but we'll, we'll be in touch. HR services, trustee White?
Um, we had a HR meeting, human resource meeting on September twelfth and we discussed certain things, but what we need are nurses, we need um TAs, we need lunch monitors, we are looking for science teacher, math teachers and language art teachers because these are all hard to replace teachers, very hard to get them because everyone is having a um hard time with teachers since it's, is a teacher shortage. We discussed maybe a, a new exit form for the teachers that are, are resigning and our exit form, we're gonna redo to see can we get more information from them. All postings are posted in district and out of district. Now, we know there are people out there that need a job. Please, TAs, lunch monitors. And I'm gonna show you how to get there very quickly. Right to go to our website, look for departments, look for HR, go to HR, click on HR, go down, go down a little bit and you'll see employment opportunities. Click on appointment opportunities and there's a whole list of what we need. Please help the school district out. I was gonna say something, but no. But um we really need your help. So I know there's a lot of people out there that could use a little extra money, especially our retirees, we take retirees too. Thank you.
Thank you trustee White. IDA, Chris?
Thank you. So the IDA, it's a little bit separate from um the school district, so the, the language is a little bit different, but it's a very important institution and has a direct impact on our costs and our revenues if projects go through. So it's important for us to report on it. The IDA has become very active recently. They lost the ability to operate for several years, but they got that back and so now projects are starting to flow. So I will be reporting regularly in some detail because it, it, it really factors into um our, our tax base here. So I think, I think it's important. So with that, I'll start. So we met on the twelfth. There was, you probably heard there was a partial collapse of a city slash IDA owned building um on Fourth Street in August. So there, there. I'm sorry, I'm Fourth Ave. Yes, I'm Fourth Avenue. It needs to be demolished, uh, and so there was discussion about that. It's gonna cost about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That will come from IDA funds. I think the city just put out a traffic advisory about that demolition, cause it's gonna start pretty soon. We talked about the administration fees paid by the projects that are part of the IDA. When, when, basically when a project gets started, they come under the control of the IDA because the IDA has the ability to grant tax abatements as a public trust corporation, as a, as a, as a public benefit corporation in New York State. So they become part of the IDA. A few of them are in arrears on paying their admin free fees. A project called Dominican Magic, one called Regency Hospitality Linen. Um, but overall, the, I think the IDA is in a good job collecting fees. Those, those two are also uh in arrears on their pilot payments to the IDA. In addition, a project called two or three Gramington Avenue, also known as Blue Rio, they're in arrears on their pilot payments to the IDA, as is Target. In total, for twenty-twenty-four, they're short about two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. But still, that's an improvement over the past. In the past, um, people regularly flouted the rules of paying back the, the pilots. Uh, the balance sheet of the IDA looks pretty good right now, actually, but we shouldn't confuse a strong balance sheet of the IDA with a strong balance sheet for the city. They're very, very separate. In fact, I think there's many who would argue that if the IDA balance sheet gets stronger, it actually could shortchange the tax base in the city, which causes local property taxes to rise. But the, right now, the IDA balance sheet is, is looking pretty good, so that's good for them to get that going. We talked about a new project, a new um potential pilot project for a, a uh high-rise rental building. The developer is Penrose and the project is called Sentinel. Sentinel has two components. It's got a one hundred and eighty-eight unit, seven story, story rental building that will be um technically described as low income. You may hear people talk about it as workforce housing, but in terms of financing for these development projects, it's important to be accurate. So workforce means that the people who will move into that building will have salaries that are eighty to a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. That's not what this building will be. This building will people who have an average of sixty percent of the area median income. So that means it's financed, the developer is financing it with low income housing tax credits, um, homes and community renewal, money from the state, flex funds from the county. These are all funds that are designed to build low income housing projects. So that's the, that's the bulk of the project. They also propose to have um some retail space and a workforce housing development program, which could be potentially good for the school district. That is just starting out this project. The first step and what they did uh at the, at the meeting last night was to, to sign an agreement where any expenses incurred by the IDA as they kind of explore, if it's something they wanna do, they will be able to bill the developer for those costs. So that's what that was. We had an update on the Q West project. This is another um low income, high-rise building that is trying to negotiate a thirty-year payment in lieu of taxes with the IDA. They had come back with a proposal to try and enrich the school district in the, in the latter part of the pilot, years sixteen through thirty, by giving some more money to the school district. It really was insufficient and it was rejected. So uh the IDA is still in negotiations with them on that. I'll probably have an update in, in the, after the October meeting. The final thing I would say is there's a bill in Albany that passed both the Senate and the House. Um, it's waiting to be signed by the governor. This bill would require IDAs to have a school district rep and a union rep as full members, full voting members of the IDA. Right now, um, Mount Vernon is kind of ahead of the curve due to a lawsuit in, in the past that puts a member of the school district on the IDA, but not as a voting member, just as an observer. This law would require all, all IDAs throughout the state to have both the school district and a union rep. The reason why the union rep is important is that when these housing projects are built, and this is the case with all the ones in Mount Vernon, the developers are able to avoid the prevailing wage laws, which means they're not using union labor. So that's why the unions have an interest in being present uh on the IDA board and voting on it. That's all the, that I have for the meeting this time.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure.
When you talk about pilots, do they ever discuss the historical significance of pilots in Mount Vernon, the terms and the amount of money that they uh give away?
Yeah, so a pilot, it stands for a payment in lieu of taxes and that is a payment that the developer makes to the IDA instead of paying property taxes. All right, so usually if someone buys property in the city, they pay property taxes. We all do as residents, we pay taxes. The IDA has the ability to grant developers, right? These are private, for-profit corporations, has the ability to grant them large tax discounts. They generally run in a range of about fifty percent off and they last for thirty years. So what this, so this is forgone taxes. So when you build a building like this, you are adding students to the school district. We know there's per pupil costs and at the same time, you're, you're, you're removing taxes from the tax base or you're limiting the taxes, you're foregoing taxes. Now, we can get, there are a lot of philosophical arguments about that. They, developers argue that but for this project, you might get less if the land goes undeveloped. But on the flip side, there's opportunity cost. If you're, if you're, if you're, you know, giving a long-term lease to a developer to build one of these projects, you're foregoing other potential opportunities that you could be using that land for. So there are flip sides to it. Historically, IDAs have been um very problematic in New York State. My statement to the IDA when I was there is that any forgone tax dollar is a concern to the school district. We, we should be looking to, to bolster um the resources that we have, not giving them away to developers, so. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. When you said that property was workforce, that was a work, that project that they're gonna do was a workforce project and they were using AMI for the, as far as the people that were moving in. AMI, um, average median income, that would be for the county or the city of Mount Vernon?
Yeah, there's not a separate one for the city of Mount Vernon. The AMI is for Westchester County and that's the one that determine, this all has to do with, with finance, right? It has to do with how they finance the project. So they finance this project, project with public debt, right? And public debt only flows to them to finance the project if they agree to build housing for people who have low incomes, which of course, there is, there is a need for it. The difference about how things are done in Mount Vernon compared to surrounding communities is the mix of the building. Uh, in White Plains, you'll often see new developments that might have ten or twenty percent of the housing reserve for people with low, very low, extremely low incomes. And the rest might be people who have, who have around a hundred percent or even market rate, they float above that. So that's a different mix. But people who do those developments don't get access to these public financing, they have to do it privately. So the developers who are coming here historically, what they're doing is reducing their risk, all right? They finance the project with public debt, right? Then they go to the IDA and they get a huge tax break. That shifts the risk if something goes wrong onto the local property taxpayer. So it's what you call a risk mitigation strategy on the part of the developers, that's what they're doing. Um, I don't, I don't, look, they're capitalists, I don't blame them. We, we have to look out for, for our interests, you know? That's, that's, that's the difference. As far as the, the Penrose project, um, uh, the Sentinel project, there are two components. There's this, this housing component, but then there's a separate workforce development project. That one is of interest. Down the road, when they are doing a cost benefit analysis, it may turn out that that overall o- offers a community of valuable benefit that outweighs any costs in lost tax revenue. We haven't gotten there yet, um, and we'll see, when we get there, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So you mentioned the IDA fees that were in arrears, uh, how does that impact the school district?
That's a great question. I, I asked uh um the comptroller, the treasurer and the lawyer for the IDA, if, if they don't collect the, the pilots or the fees that might flow to the school district, those fees and pilots don't flow to the school district. So if, if uh there's a project that's in arrears with the IDA, it might cause delays in the pilot money flowing to the school district. So it's something you want to watch. I think they, they have a strong incentive to make sure people who have these tax abatements are paying what they owe. Um, and I, I think they've done a very good job of doing that, reducing the amount in arrears, but it's certainly something to watch.
Right, thanks. Um, the other question I had is the developer for Sentinel, um, there was, you said, you mentioned they're, they're receiving tax credits already in various places. This isn't in addition to the pilot?
No, so they're seeking, um, so to finance this project, they will be using uh what are called low income housing tax credits from the federal government. That's the, that's a large portion of the financing. They'll also be using state money, right? So the state has a pile of money for homes and community renewal that's designed to build uh low income housing, cause we have a severe housing shortage at the low end. It's important that people are home, we have to do that. So in order, they, what they'll claim, and this is often what they do in Mount Vernon, they'll say, we won't build this project if we don't get this, this tax abatement in addition to the tax credits. Okay, so we'll, we'll take a look at that when it gets here. So they are seeking it, but they don't have it yet.
And the last thing I have, about a year ago, you, you published two very good videos that were based on the conversation with the IDA and the mayor's office where they discussed the schematic that they were using to determine how many students per unit and they were using sh- low, like short-rise buildings and high, and you called out that there was discrepancies in those, in those schematics. Have you seen anything change in your more recent discussions?
Also a good question. So um the school district's attorney um threw out, threw a le, put a, wrote a letter to the IDA about the same time uh that I put those videos out. And he, he did a great analysis, I forget the lawyer's name.
Tom.
Tom, thank you. Yeah. He did a great analysis uh in real time uh of the actual utilization, uh number of, number of kids, average number of, of children per unit in Mount Vernon. The report that was used by, in the economic analysis that was presented by the developer and the IDA was grossly underestimating the number of students. That study that they used was, was inappropriate for our community and that's really what I was calling out. I actually, I, I talked to the author about it, I reached out to the author of that paper and she agreed that it was, it did make no sense to use that here in Mount Vernon.
But nothing new.
No, nothing new.
Thank you. So insurance, any updates on insurance, uh, the insurance committee?
No, no, we have not had a meeting.
Policy committee, um, we had a policy committee meeting yesterday and we discussed having a, can you hear me? I'm sorry. We discussed having a lactation room in all the buildings. It's mandated by the state right now, so. It's mandated by the state right now, so we're working on putting up some cubicles and having a divider, so there could be some privacy. So at some point in time, the board's going to have to vote on this policy. Thank you. That's all I have for policy. Safety and security, trustee Jenga?
At the moment, we haven't had a meeting. It's going to be before the end of the month, so we should have something by the next meeting.
Thank you. Technology?
Yes, as you're aware, technology is a new committee that was formed this school year, and so I actually met with Carlos and Dr. Doggett so that we could actually prepare for a meeting and develop the items that will be presented on that agenda, and we should be meeting within the next week or two.
Okay, thank you. Special education?
Yes, thank you. We had a special education committee meeting. It was trustee Saunders, trustee White, and I. We met with Ms. Michelle McKinney Bromley, she's the director of PPS, and Dr. Kelly Ramsey, the director of Student Support Service and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Compliance. We discussed the department training goals regarding individual education plans for programs, CSE chairs, parent communication. In fact, there's a meet and greet tomorrow night at Rebecca Turner at 5:30 PM.
Yes.
So I encourage people to attend that. So these are good goals for the department. We talked about the staffing issues with related service, particularly with speech and language therapy. Right now, it was estimated that about eighty-five percent of student-mandated services are being met, which of course means fifteen percent student mandates are not being met. The big cause of that is locating and retaining staff. It's very, very difficult to do, particularly in some of the ones that are low-frequency. So for example, vision therapy, there just aren't a lot of people who are certified to do that, and so if you get a few kids here who need it, it can be a struggle to find qualified staff who will come out and provide those services. So that's an ongoing challenge, not just here, but really everywhere. It's an ongoing challenge. So I think they're really working hard to satisfy that. Compensatory services, we touched on that, working with companies and make up the services that were owed from last year. Some parents don't want the virtual services, which is a prevailing model that's used. That's understandable, so that's kind of what that is. Let's see, Dr. Kelly Ramsey gave us a report on the corrective action plan that dates back to 2015. There is a compliance monitor that they provide feedback to on a regular basis. The hope is that this intensive monitoring will be done in a year or so, which I think is good. It's a lot of work to do that. We also touched on infrastructure needs around bathrooms and toileting. For example, sometimes it's difficult to change students because the bathrooms don't accommodate the space for a changing table. Some students who also have significant physical needs, there might not, maybe they need a lift, for example. There's not room to have that kind of mechanical device there. So these are hardships that I think, as we go forward and we consider future capital projects that we need to do, we need to be sensitive to these needs. We talked about an increase in preschool special education referrals, something that we have to monitor more closely as we go forward. Obviously, if preschool referrals are going up, that means there's likely to be an increase of flow of school-age children with special needs into the district, so we have to keep a close tab on that. It was noted that the specialty department webpage has a TA employee handbook. I looked at it, it looks really good. I think that's great. A lot of districts don't have that, so kudos for putting that together. And finally, we touched on a wish list item that I think would be great is a sensory room. Historically, they've been used for individuals with autism, but it's really expanded beyond that. Sensory rooms can be a real powerful tool for anybody. We all have situations where we like a nice calm lava lamp, quiet music. It can be very, very helpful in stress management. Of course, the problem is cost and space, so I would encourage the community to think about that. Anything we can do to support that, I think, is a good thing. That's all I have.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And lastly, wellness, trustee Mitchell?
Really quick, so we have, the issue with the lunch, the second meal pricing came up, and as the wellness, I definitely did reach out to ask, you know, about communication, and so it was good to hear Dr. Smith be able to speak to that. Also, full sports. So full sports are in full swing, and speaking to another topic of the shortage of nurses, this is a major reason why there's an impact to how many students are being cleared medically to actually participate. So the modified volleyball, which is a seventh and eighth grade volleyball team, as well as the JV boy soccer, both impacted heavily by it because, again, lack of nurses to actually clear the students. Also, we need our parents to ensure that they've got their medicals from their doctors, submitted to the schools, to their schools, and that they're on family ID. There is a simple, the nurse, or the principal, or the secretary in the school buildings, or the coach can give you easy access to how to fill out family ID. I believe it's also a way to find out and do it, you do it through the district site. I want to take one hot step back. Mark, you sent us, Mr. Ramundi, you sent us a security update earlier today. I just want to speak to that for one second because you noticed that you said that offices completed compliances, training, you know, through BOCs and CPR and mandated safety protocols, which is a good thing. We're on time, we're timely with that. You also mentioned, we always been talking about the uniforms and anybody, we're still with the same thing. If there's something that doesn't fit, they can come back and let you know. And the safety measures that are in place for this year, you mentioned all of that in this report, so you said, when is the next meeting? I didn't hear. When is it?
Fully?
Next Wednesday, pushing for Wednesday? Okay, thank you.
Trustee.
That concludes the committee.
Trustee Saunders, may I?
Yes.
Trustee, Mr. brought up the pricing in reference to the second meals, and trustee Middleton brought up the pricing as to second meals in reference to how we determine that price, and whether it was the district or whether it was the superintendent. I just want to make sure that the public understand, no matter who determined the price, the price is at cost. That means that no profit is being made by the district, so we're only passing on what we pay for in order to have the service. And to the district's demise, sometimes, and to the community's demise, we take that in consideration because we understand the social economics of Mount Vernon, and that might be against raising taxes, but with understanding the social economics, we are not looking to make a profit off of the students because we know that there are families that have kids in the community that can't afford to increase. There are families here who don't have kids in the community, and they're behind in their taxes, and we want to make sure that we kind of teeter that balance to make sure that we don't go too far to the left, that we suffer financial distress every year, and we go too far to the right and cause people to lose their homes because they're in arrears in their taxes, and cause those that can't live anymore to leave. So it's at cost, I think that's what's important. That means no profit is being made, and whether it's 125 or 135, we're only passing on what we pay. The only other option is to go lower than that, which obviously would not be responsible.
I just want to say that while we are sitting here, I don't chair a committee, and we've changed things, okay? So I'm not a chair of any committee and chose not to be for the committee that I was chair for. But I do want to say, in terms of representing Rebecca Turner and Graham Elementary School, that they gave a wonderful luncheon in a week's time at Rebecca Turner with Mr. Newby and his staff, putting out a great, awesome luncheon with parents, students from pre-K to twelve, and that they did an awesome job in just bringing the community together. There are needs that Rebecca Turner stand in need of, that I'm sure Mr. Campbell is aware of, even in terms of the whole nursing situation. There are other needs because now their numbers are double than what they were last year. So there is some attention that we need to get better than we have not to Rebecca Turner, but at the same time, they are moving forward and they are doing pretty good in spite of just having Principal Newby, his staff, and basically Mr. Brother Mohammed. And I just want to say kudos to them for what they are doing, but they do have some needs because New Mount Vernon High School is what it is, and we want Rebecca Turner to be the new Rebecca Turner High School or Turner School too. So I want to say kudos and a shout-out to them. I did go to Graham School yesterday morning, as Graham is one of my schools too, and I want to say kudos to Mr. Ramundi and Mark Raguzzo and everybody that had a hand in everything that has been done. I did go to the classrooms on the second and third floor, it was beautiful. Ceilings were a little higher, but you know, it was great. And so I hope it stays that way, and it was wonderful to be outside, to receive parents and students and just everybody that did come. Dr. Doggett was there, and you know, a few others, but it was awesome, and I just wanted to give a great, big shout-out to Dr. McGregor and her staff, and all that's been said and done there.
I'm going to make a, I'm going to, just really quick, Mr. Royce, to be honest, I didn't ask anything about who determined the prices. My questions were with communication timing, which didn't, which, you know, we know where we are with that. My question was, who gets the money from that second meal collection? It's not the school district, is it? Or is it?
We have to pay for the service, so it's a flat, it's a wash.
That goes to, where does the money go to?
It goes, it goes...
To Aramark.
Right. But you can't have a question and answer that's incomplete, so let me continue, right? If you pay a fare to get on the bus, you go to your destination. If you pay for a meal, you have to pay it to someone, a vendor. The issue is, is whether or not that's a wash, or whether we're making a profit. In order to provide the second meal, it has to be paid for. So you're never going to have a second meal that's free, nobody provides services for free. So, yes, the money's going to the vendor because they're providing the meal.
So the money goes to Aramark, correct? That's all I needed to know.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Old business from committees? Any old business?
Not from committees, but at the last board meeting, I had communicated that I was in touch with Iona University with, oh, I'm sorry. Am I not talking into the mic? Sorry. I had communicated that I was advocating for Iona University to extend the AI program to two additional schools. Well, I'm here to tell you that they agreed to extend the program to one additional school. So that's a great thing, and Dr. Smith and I will be having a meeting tomorrow with the director of the engineering and technology program at, and I'm sorry, and Dr. Pierce, because now that one additional school, Dr. Smith chose the new Mount Vernon High School to get that program taught at Mount Vernon High. So we will be having a meeting tomorrow with the director from Iona University. And I just want to share the curriculum of the AI program that's going to be taught now at three schools, it's going to, it's already at Mandela and the STEAM Academy, and now, as I said, it's going to go to the new Mount Vernon High. So the Engineering and Technology Express Program, as it is called, the artificial intelligence, AI, is a multi-session course in which students in middle school and the high schools learn about the AI, how AI works, and build a custom project to train their own AI. The curriculum is designed by AI club scientists and follows the four Cs approach, where students learn core AI concepts, learn how real-world AI works, and develop context and hands-on capability by building many AIs, and apply their creativity to develop the innovative project. The curriculum offers introduction to AI, introduction to classification, AI lifecycle, regression, fighting for AI coding elements, AI ethics, hands-on exercises, and real-world explorations. So I have to say that Mount Vernon School District is moving way ahead of time, and these students, who knows, we're probably grooming the next Bill Gates or the next genius when it comes on to AI. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much, trustee Kirk. Any more committee, old committee report? Okay, so let's move on. We have something?
I've been staying busy. So also, ELOC Engineering Group, I've been in partnership, they've been in partnership with the school district, thanks to trustee Jenga. We met with them last year, they came in, they taught the students, mostly from the STEAM Academy, coding. And I will have to say that they will be coming back to the school district again, starting next week, Saturday, the 28th, no, not next week, well, the 28th. They will be coming back, and now open enrollment is available for the students who wants to enroll to the program, coding program. And I know Dr. Gabitan is in talks with all-girls coding, and so we hoping to get that also into the school district.
Great.
So I'm all about engineering.
Thank you. You sure that's it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so we can move on to the...
Can we go on to our resolutions? Kavanaugh motion for 6.1, Human Resources 111A, certified?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Kavanaugh motion for 6.2, Approval of Human Resources Resolution, non-certified?
Motion. Louder. Second.
All in favor?
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a question, just one question. When someone resigns from the district and they hold a teaching cert, there's a thirty-day requirement that they, before they move to another district, and I saw that there were a couple that were waived, and my question is, is that the impact of our students, and how often do we waive the requirement for them to stay that thirty, require thirty days?
Yeah, so if it was a waived thirty-day, if the thirty days were waived, that was because we found another teacher to replace them. But we do hold the majority of the staff to that thirty days.
Thank you.
I have a question. I want to direct to you, Mr. Campbell. Sorry, trustee Middleton.
My question is, I have seen where, on a tab, I've seen an individual who I have seen working, but now we have a tab tonight to vote on that individual. Then what I saw, as opposed to tonight to vote, is backdated is to July 1st. So my question is, are we going to, because I've seen it before, notice that there's backdating of dates and people working, and then you see a tab later that we have to vote on, if it makes any sense? So I seen somebody today that we're voting on, working prior to today. Then we backdate to July, and then we vote on it tonight, which is September 17th. So I've seen that happen quite a bit, where we're backdating. Does that cost us any money in terms of the district because we're backdating, we've got to pay people, or why is that something that seems to be a little bit consistent?
So it depends on the staff member and what the position is. So we did that not as far back as July, but we did that for... So we did that not as far back as July, but we did that for staff, new teachers that were coming in. So we wanted to make sure that we had a student, had a teacher in front of all the students. So for example, the first day of school was August 28th, but the board meeting was on September 3rd. So we did have some teachers that started on August 28th. So we were able to get into the classroom, do what they had to do. And then they were voted on for September 3rd. So we backdated it for those dates.
Okay, that's the teachers. Excuse me, I wasn't very specific, I guess, in terms of who I was speaking to, really civil service. So, and I get it with the teachers. But I've seen those who are civil service employees per diem. And I say, that's already been working, but we're voting tonight for those who've already been working and backdated it to like July. But we're voting on the tab tonight.
I don't believe that's happened with per diem, so like a sub?
Well, it's, it's in here.
So one specific person we're talking about?
Well, I, I see a few people, but I'm just, I'm just telling you who I've run into that I thought we probably already voted for, but I see that we're voting on tonight. So that says to me, and then when I read it, is backdated to July 1st.
I, yeah, I don't.
Seen that happen quite a bit, especially with civil service, all right? Where you get a backdate and basically we vote later, and then they're working already. So.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. That's not something that would happen, especially you're talking like a three-month period. I, I don't.
Well, not a three-month, but I'm just saying, if we're voting tonight for somebody who's already been working, and, you know.
Trustee Middleton.
I'm just like a little bit confused with it.
Would you want us to pull that resolution for the discussion? Or they were voting on it?
We could, I, you know what, I'll just speak to them, you know? And we could, you know, I just, I just want clarity on it because it's not just this particular person, but I've seen it in other tabs and other meetings. So where that seems to happen, especially with civil service. So it's just a question of why is that continuing to happen? Not a lot, but I've just seen it happen enough. I know this, but anyway.
I would, I would say it's, it would be the same concept and mindset of what we do for the teachers if that were to happen. But I, like I said, I don't see anybody on here that that was a situation.
Because I don't want to call a name now, but I could call one name, but I don't.
Don't, don't call the name.
No, I'm not. I'm not going to call a name, but, you know. I don't know, I'm just asking a question to get clarity.
So was a motion on the floor, right? Okay, so what was the motion? Where are we now?
We're in to vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. Okay. Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.3, Authorization to Pay Staff for Bus Duty?
Motion.
Second. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose?
Yes.
Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1, Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 5, dated September 17, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I just have a question. To, I think this is Dr. Gabaton, right? Yes, could you give a little explanation? Because my understanding, and I'm not sure, I just want to use for an example, like with outside tutoring services, there are teachers within our district who want to know, why do we have to go outside? You know, one example is, and I don't know if this is true, I'm just saying, that there's an academic, the academic power hour, right? That basically, is it true that Sylvan has something to do during the year rather than our teachers? Or no, was that just August? I'm not sure. But that just, you know, something that came to my attention. So when it comes to the outside, I know some of them are needed and other of it, you know? But if you could just give a little explanation.
So all the tabs on here for outside tutoring are serving students who are unmedical or who need somebody to go to the home. We also have homebound teachers who will go to students' houses to provide service during suspension or if they're also unmedical, depending on the student. The Sylvan tab that was passed is grant-funded and under grant, Sylvan is written, the students are going to the Sylvan Center up until December. Those same students will still qualify for our academic power hour we are having here. Parents are making arrangements for when those students will be going to the Sylvan Center, outside of what we offered already. So it's in addition to what we will be offering to our students.
Okay, but our teachers will still have that opportunity, opportunity for the academic power hour?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Approve MBK Fellows Program, Staff and Stipends for 2024-2025 School Year?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.3, Authorization to Approve to Continue the District's Title I Schoolwide Committee for the 24-25 School Year? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, Authorization to Correct Resolution Worden for KGND Architects from the September 3, 2024 meeting?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, To Enter into Executive Session For the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, The Financial History of Particular Personal Corporation, Or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, Or Removal of Particular Personal Corporation, And to Receive Legal Advice on Pending Matter?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
We will not be returning tonight? Right. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.